Participating into tonight's COW meeting. It is, um, six thirty-one minutes. Uh, could I get a roll call, please?
Portato.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Harper.
Here.
Ingram.
Present.
McGuire. Patterson. Rector.
Here.
Store. Summers.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thorson.
Here.
Tinsley.
Present.
Wolken.
Here.
Young.
Here.
Clemmons.
Here.
Clifford. Covert.
Present.
Eisenman.
Here.
Esri.
Here.
Rosales.
Here. Could I get a motion to move the tonight's agenda in addendum? Moved by Jim, second by Lorraine. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of Committee of the Whole, September tenth, twenty-eight, twenty-nineteen. Moved by Eric, second by John. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Public participation. I see some public, I don't see any sheets. Anybody interested in saying a few words to the board? Good, we'll move on. Communications from the board. Item number six. Stephanie, I mean, Charles Young.
Thank you Chair Rosales. Hello, everybody. Just want to let everybody know that once again, our annual NWACP dinner will be taking place Friday, October twenty-fifth. I have tickets. If you guys want to purchase any tickets, you're welcome to go through me. I prefer you go through me as opposed to going online. Um, our guest speaker would be Dr. Robert Jones, University of Illinois. Some of you guys probably heard him speak before, some of you guys probably haven't. But it's all good, he's a good speaker. Um, so come out, I think it'd be a good way to network with predominantly people of color. But also there'd be other people there as well as, um, city officials, uh, different other government agencies, schools, agencies, uh, representing, um, our annual NWACP dinner. So come out and, um, yeah, I think it'd be a good thing, especially if you're running for office too. Both ends, right? It's good whether you run for office or not. I think it's a good thing to come out and mingle with, um, us as a people.
Thank you for sharing, Charles.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Jim.
Yeah, I was asked to read this, uh, into the public record, um, this evening from a constituent of mine that was unable to make the meeting this evening, uh, for public participation, but I'll read it in communication. My name is Mark Ortwig and me and my wife Jennifer Livin Muhammad. I'm contacting you because I wanted to make you aware of something that I believe has or has or will have significant impact on the county cash flow. I set up my property tax payments to be automatically withdrawn from my bank savings account. As of today, the second installment hasn't been withdrawn. I looked up my parcel on the county website to see if any penalties had been added to my account and it shows that it has been paid. Lucky me. However, I assume at some point down the road, like maybe when the bank account gets reconciled, this problem will be found. I wonder how many others are there like me? Surely I'm not the only one. I could have contacted the treasurer's office about this, but after reading the News Gazette article on September eleventh, I thought, uh, I would contact you instead. It is a shame the board doesn't want to have an outside performance audit because of what I'm guessing is purely partisan reasons. I guess they are okay with waiting for the first overdraft notice from the bank before admitting there's a problem. Thank you for reading this. Mark Ortwig, eighteen oh three, Cobble Creek Drive, Mohammed, Illinois.
Thank you, Jim, uh, for reading Mark's comments and input to the minutes. Is there anyone else, uh, wishing to inform the board, board members? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven. Kyle Patterson, social justice, justice and social services.
All right, uh, we don't have any substantial agenda items this month, just the monthly reports that are available on the website. Uh, we also have the August twenty-nineteen Rose Grant's reentry financial report. Um, anybody have any comments on that? Seeing none, there is no other business. Um, and for a chair's report, I wanted to just make a quick comment. Uh, it's unfortunate that we need is not here. There have been several news reports that state pretty explicitly that the county is planning on spending forty-seven million dollars on, uh, jail construction. And, uh, through conversation with the sheriff and members of facilities committee and pretty much every county board member I've spoken to, I don't think anybody intends on, uh, spending that amount. What was presented to us was a number of options and the combined cost was forty-seven million dollars. Uh, it's now upon the county board and the, uh, sheriff to decide exactly what portions of those we want to, uh, move forward on. Uh, but I think it should just be made clear to the public that nothing has been decided and this is a conversation that we're going to have openly with the public and, uh, bring everybody to the table. And, uh, that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you for the clarification, Kyle. I think it's necessary because I think there's, uh, a misnomer or some misinformation being put out there unnecessarily. Um, great, uh, we have, uh, Charles Young, policy, personnel and appointments.
Okay, so how we gonna do this is we're gonna skip down to B.
No, we're gonna do actually A.
Oh, you wanna do A?
But since you're the chair, that's why I'm introducing you first.
[laughing]
Because you cannot move, uh, any, um, resolutions. So what you would do is you would read number one and then pass it on to me and then I will read the resolution that's at the desk, at your desk. That includes my nomination.
Thank you for the correction there Chair Rosales.
Thank you, Charles.
A, county board chair, one resolution appointing a county board member in District Ten to fill Tanisha King Taylor unexpired term ending November thirtieth, twenty, twenty-twenty. So.
Okay, resolution number twenty nineteen, two eighty-seven. A resolution appointing Connie Dillard Myers as a county board member in District Ten to replace Tanisha King Taylor for an unexpired term ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. Whereas Tanisha King Taylor, a county board member in District Ten for Champagne County, submitted her resignation from the office effective August nineteenth, twenty-nineteen. And whereas pursuant to ten ILCS five dash twenty-five, uh, dash eleven, when a vacancy occurs in any elected county office, the county board shall declare that vacancy. And that such vacancy exists and notification therefore shall be given to the county central committee of each established political party. And the vacancy shall be filled within sixty days by appointment of the chairman of the county board, uh, with the advice and consent of the county board. Whereas the county board chair sent notification of the vacancy to central committee, central, county central committee of established political parties. And whereas the county board, uh, chair recommends the appointment of Connie Dillard Myers to fill the unexpired term of county board member in District Ten ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty. And whereas the county board chair also recommends the appointment of Connie Dillard Myers to serve as a member of the environmental and land use committee replacing Tanisha King. Now, let, uh, therefore it be resolved by the county board of Champagne County that the appointment of Connie Dillard Myers to fill the unexpired term ending November thirtieth, twenty-twenty of Champagne County Board Member District Ten as well as appointment as a member of the environmental and land, land use committee is hereby approved. Uh, and so I moved for approval of this resolution today, uh, October twenty-fourth, twenty-nineteen. Okay. Moved by, by Lorraine, I heard a second. Second by Jim Goss. Okay, Charles, you want to do, um, the roll call? What?
Discussion, yeah.
Oh, discussion. Was there a question from somebody? I heard something, but I must have overlooked it. Okay, go ahead, discussion?
Just a point of clarification, um, today is not October twenty-fourth, so are we actually voting on this today? Or is this just for information and we're voting it for it on the full board? I just wasn't sure I understood.
Well, the timeline and process, as I indicated to both, uh, caucus chair, both the Republican and Democratic Party, uh, we couldn't nominate, uh, and appoint somebody in August because August was already too late. And then we had to allow enough time for the advertisement of the position to the county chairs of each political party. And that took some time and, uh, we couldn't, we missed the, the window of opportunity for September, so we couldn't do it at the September county board meeting. So the next possible date will be the twenty, it actually will be tonight because we're still within that sixty-day period of time. I believe it's fifty-seven days. I indicated that to not only Aaron, I indicated that to Steve Summers and Jim Goss and I indicated that to Darlene. Uh, I got, uh, legal advice from Julia Reese's office indicating that the process of selection, uh, as long as it's within that sixty-day timeframe, which will be today, it would be okay because he had to come out first out of policy. And then from policy, he had to go into the next committee, which is COW, which is today. And if we approve this, it's a county board and then it's just a matter of putting it on the agenda, uh, for the county board meeting on the twenty-fourth. So this resolution actually goes into effect the twenty-fourth when this individual gets sworn in. But today we will do the voting regarding, uh, the timeline that I set forth for this
Okay. Roll call, right?
I would prefer a roll call. That way, you know, those that are in favor could put their name behind it.
Okay, any more discussion?
I'm reading the resolution, but I'm trying to recall what our county board rules lay out in terms of this process. This resolution says that it should be by appointment of the chair with advice and consent of the county board. If I'm correct, our county board rules say that the chair is to make a decision with the advice and consent of the respective central committee. So I'm trying to understand how our county board rules don't align with this resolution.
What is your question?
It does not appear that this resolution aligns with our county board rules.
It does.
No. Let's pull up the rules. The rules say that you are to confer with the central committee, not with the board. That's not what our county board rules say. I don't have a copy with me in hand, but I'm quite sure that's what it said.
Sure, Steve. What happened is that this is the same resolution that Pius utilized when the recommendation of the county board chair was to basically sit, uh, Charles Young. And this board basically indicated that they would not do that and, and basically Pius Weibel decided to sit, uh, Stacy Douglas. So he didn't need, not listen and he broke the precedence of our board rules by saying, I'm gonna go ahead and select who I feel more comfortable with. And Stacy Douglas was seated, not Charles Young. And if you recall, I sort of lit the board and I lit and made my public opinion known to this board that that was not the precedence in past of how board members were selected by the board chair. So Pius broke the precedent setting a trend that I could accept the recommendation of and I cannot accept the recommendation of. Basically, there was a process that was put in place, three candidates came forward, the rules and instructions and policies and procedures were explained to each, uh, candidate. And out of the three, one opted not to complete the five survey questions that were given to them. The second one chose to complete the survey and disseminate the information without sharing it with the chair, which to me, that seems like it's a disqualification when you don't turn it back into the designated person that you're supposed to and then you submit it to the precinct and you submit it to people. And then the third person, my candidate, followed all designated instructions. Second is that there was participation with the precincts within that district. They went ahead and, you know, it was the most popular vote and basically, you know, one candidate came on top. But that still doesn't dictate that I need to select that person. So what I did is that I, I did a one-hour interview with my administrative assistant in, in place to question and the questions that I utilized were the same questions for those two finalists. And upon my professional, uh, opinion, uh, going on twelve years on this county board, I felt that one factor was not included and that was the factor of diversity. I don't think we indicated that either in the application because we can't do that. And we cannot give preferential treatment to one race over the other. But I think for me, it is very important after reading the diatribes that were on email against my name, uh, and the sabotage that was done by my caucus regarding the process and try to derail that. And I think that basically the way I look at it is that the precedence was already set by Pius. So I could go with the standard prior to Pius or I could follow Pius's, uh, preference and, and basically select according to my interview questions, uh, my reading of the application or of the survey and any additional materials such as resume or additional materials such as committee participation and community work. So I don't understand why you're challenging me here in front of everybody when you know that this resolution is exactly the same resolution Pius used and with board approval. This board, not this board, but the board that was there in place at that time, went ahead and approved something that was not following procedures.
If you go back to what my question was, it was why does this resolution not align with our county board rules that we passed last December?
It is.
That's my question.
It is.
No, it does not.
It is. Go back and read.
Okay.
I did.
Anybody else, questions? Any discussions?
So it sounds like you had your own interview with them, which I think, um, is an interesting way of doing it. You, we weren't privy to that and we weren't around for that, but it seems like there were some distinctions between the two of them. I'd be interested to hear a little bit of what led you one way or the other, what, was there a particular issue?
Diversity. Robert King was an African-American male. Uh, Tanisha King was an African-American female. We have two female Republicans. We have two female Democrats. We have one female African-American that is a Democrat and I wanted to make sure that the continuity between diversity, equity and access was consistent with what we had here before. So by nominating, uh, Connie Dillard, it's, it's consistent with the replacement of Tanisha King, an African-American woman.
Okay, um, I, I guess you, you brought up Robert King's name. He was replaced by a, a white man, uh, just who's now in, in the room. Um, so it's kind of a weird thing for me, but, uh, okay, I guess, uh, so if I'm getting everything correct that you're saying here, you're saying that you had a problem with Pius breaking precedent, but since he's done it, now the floodgates are open, so we should expect that anybody who sits in the county board chair's position to make unilateral decisions, I, as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware, the central committee of whatever party of the vacant seat is the one who makes the recommendation. Theoretically, what you're saying is that even a Republican seat that was open right now, you could theoretically just say, I don't want to pay attention to your recommendation. So if we're talking about doing this, we're opening the floodgates to future board chairs or even you, um, not taking the recommendation even of the party. Is that, this, this is the precedent we're continuing to align here? Is that?
I did not open up that floodgate.
But you're willing to stand in it.
My predecessor did that and it's basically my, my appointment. It's nobody else's appointment other than mine. So I have to make sure that I have in play all the factors that I considered a, a proper replacement for that seat.
Right, I'm just making sure that we're, you're saying that you didn't agree with it then, but since it's done, that's gonna be the way that you're gonna do it now.
No, it's not gonna be the way. It's basically gonna be.
It's the way you're doing it.
The way, this is the way I'm doing it this time around, yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we had that on the record.
Jody.
I'm sorry, I guess I'm a little confused. Democrats don't want who he's appointing? Is that what I'm gathering? I don't know, it just feels like there's a little bit of an argument going on and I'm not sure what the argument is. So I just want to understand.
Stephanie.
Um, this is not, I don't want to weigh in on either of the candidates, I think they're both lovely candidates. Um, and you're new to the board. Every time that this has happened, there's been a different process. Um, and just frankly, as somebody who went through this process myself, who was appointed, it, it, it remains incredibly frustrating. In this particular case, the candidate that was put forward was not the candidate that was chosen by the Democratic Central Committee, um, the people that voted. So this wasn't the person that was recommended by that process, which is what Steve was alluding to. Um, this is not the first time that this happened, although the description of what happened, the idea that this is the same as what happened in the previous is not completely. Um, every time, every seat that has been sat like this, and I believe since me on this board, there's been four, there's been a different process. So that's what this is about. And, and for me, it's not about what either the people are, just at some point if we could get a formal process and follow it would be incredibly advantageous. Unfortunately, that's not, um, only beholden to the folks in this room.
Okay, Eric Thorson, next. Dan McGuire.
All right, thank you. Um, I understand that this is your decision, um, and you've made your decision based on your process. Uh, I, I, like Mike, find it, uh, curious that you found a problem with the way Pius has alleged to have changed the process, yet you adopted it. And Steve's point is that the rules we adopted were after Pius's change or floodgates were open. And those rules do not say what this resolution says. Uh, that being said, um, the central committee is made up of people who basically volunteer to walk around in the fall, get signatures and run for an obscure office, uh, sit through meetings and play a very fundamental part at the very street level in, uh, the democratic process, be them the Republican or the Democrat central committee people. I want to thank the people who came out in District Ten. I went to the meeting, uh, I wasn't in the meeting for the votes. One of our members on the board was, uh, I'm a precinct committee person. Um, so I was curious to see how it ran. Want to thank the, the chair of the county party for getting it organized because that's, that's what, uh, our rules say. There, I understand the vote was, uh, was not close. There was two fine candidates there, but one candidate came out of that with a strong recommendation from the precinct committee people. And what I worry about is frustration of precinct committee people when we already have trouble filling all the spots, generally, both, uh, parties do. Because it's for the most part an invisible, um, sometimes tedious job, uh, that involves a lot of walking around, uh, getting out the vote and, uh, promoting the candidates that align with your party's choices. I worry and maybe you should reach out to these people and explain your decision process so that they don't feel like their voice doesn't matter at all because their voice was rather strong in this case. At no time did we say, you know, we disagree with having a Democrat fill this seat. We need the seat filled. It's unfortunate that Tanisha King, who worked very hard to get elected, uh, had to choose her basic economy of feeding herself and her family, uh, and take a job elsewhere. People run for office and things change. Uh, some people take time off for, uh, what I think are spurious reasons. Uh, Tanisha had to leave for a very valid reason. Uh, and I welcome someone filling this seat. But I, I think you do need to maybe explain to the, especially the precinct people in District Ten, uh, your thought process with something better than Pius did it and so now I'm doing it and that's all.
McGuire.
I guess I would understand that. I, I don't know, um, what process is he, I, I understand the Republican process actually because we've been through that, or the Democrat processes. My concern is the comments about the chair would decide which party would fill that if it was filling a Republican seat or a Democrat seat. That precedence hasn't been broken. Your process may have been different, but because your process has been changed different times seats have been filled, that shouldn't impact the precedents that were filling a Democrat seat or a Republican seat. That should remain the same because that hasn't been changed. We're still, we're still filling a Democrat seat. Um, and that, that shouldn't change because it could change and we could be filling a Republican seat or a Democrat seat next time. And, uh, that shouldn't change.
Summers.
Thank you, Jim. Because if I understood what Chair Rosales said earlier, he indicated that he would have the ability to choose whomever he selected to fill seats, which could indeed impact if there is a Republican vacancy. And I do want to say, Chair Rosales, my question was one of process and policy. You seem to take exception to my asking a question and view it as me challenging you at a public meeting. I'm asking a question, sir. You're in the role to answer those questions.
Call for the question.
Question? What question? Roll call? Oh, okay. Okay, roll call? Anyone want a second? So Lorraine called, you called a motion for the, um, roll call, right? Oh, no more discussion? Okay. Anybody second? Rector, second? Okay, move it on to the roll call. Okay, so, um, normally the secretary, whoever, they do it over there, but I'm gonna do it my way by the names here.
No, no.
Oh, I can't do that?
No, it's gotta be done by the.
Who made another? Okay. Roll call.
Portato.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Harper.
Yes.
Ingram.
Nope.
McGuire. Patterson. Rector.
Yes.
Store.
Yes.
Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
No.
Thorson.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Vajas. Wolken.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Clemmons.
Yes.
Clifford.
Yes.
Covert. Eisenman.
Yes.
Esri.
Yes.
Rosales.
Yes, and I would like all, to thank all that supported this, uh, resolution and I think, uh, it has been a good choice. And this person will be seated at the beginning of our county board meeting on the twenty-fourth, so this will go into effect on the twenty-fourth, not today. But today was consensus by this board to move this candidate forward to the next process of the county board. Thank you. Charles, is all yours.
All righty, thank you there Chair Rosales. Okay, I guess. Okay, now we at B. Um, county executive, number one, monthly HR report, August and September twenty-nineteen has been accepted, placed on file. Number two, appointment, reappointments. The county executive for A, Champagne, Urbana Mass Transit District, one position term, ten twenty-four, twenty-nineteen to twelve thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one is recommending, uh, Philip, Philip Fiesa, who is appointed. Can I get a motion? Lorraine first. McGuire second. Any discussion? Store.
Yes, uh, Chair Dr. Young.
Yes.
Have you had a chance to interview, uh, the candidate and at least learn the correct pronunciation of his name?
No, absolutely not.
Hey, can I ask, uh, I, if you, did you have a chance to ask the candidate, uh, whether the candidate actually uses the MTD?
No, not at all. I never know who the candidates are prior to the paperwork coming out and that's not enough for me. Any more discussion? Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? No, Dr. Young? Motion pass. B, the county executive for Romp Drainage District, one position term, 10/24/2019 to 8/30/2022, is recommending Kenneth Smith, who is appointed. Can I get a motion? Who was it? Clifford, second, Harper? Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? No, Dr. Young, no. Motion pass. C, the county executive for Unit Drainage District, number one, Philo in Urbana, one position term, current date, is recommending Andy Hugh, who is appointed. Can I get a mo... Oh, so moved by Clemmons, second motion? Second Harper? Any discussion? Fortardo.
Just a point of clarification, and I don't understand the term. What does current date mean?
It means the position was expired and it starts whenever he gets appointed.
But then when does it run until?
It always runs till the end of the three-year term.
So till 20... Should that be on there? Should at least the clothes? Oh, it's on the orange... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that we had an orange one. Sorry about that. Did not know that we had an orange one.
That's fine. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor by saying aye? Any nay? No, Charles. Motion pass. C Sheriff, one deputy sheriff mayor commissioned, one position, term 12/1/2019 to 11/30/2025, is recommending a reappointment of Michael Kirby. Can I get a motion? Harper, first, second? Who was it? Clifford. Any discussion? All in favor by saying aye? Any nay? No, Charles. Motion pass. Okay, D. County Clerk, one, September 2019, report has been accepted and placed on file. E, committee chair, that's me. And I'm recommending, one, resolution to update the language of the county board rules and procedure. Can I get a motion? First, Lorraine, second by Ferraro. Any discussion?
I have one.
Okay, McGuire.
So as this document indicates, we have no ability to enforce this as a county to the county exec, which means we're changing our rules for something that we can't do.
Okay, I will speak with that. One thing about rules is this, and you guys may disagree with me, which is fine. There's a certain merit, there's a conscious, there's ideas that we as human beings consider and we can do. It's not a penalty, nothing like that. So I know the law says what it says. However, to be transparent and to be more inclusive, I'm just talking about a good, more act of faith, a good, better way to communicate and to do business with people who are elected. So it's just a matter of just your moral conscience. And no one here is not gonna tell me your moral conscience does not play into any kind of rules. Rules is just there. They're language, they are words. We interpret how rules manage. And there's always a little bit of misinterpretation and things happen, or accuracy, those things happen. But, yeah, so this is all I'm requesting, because as I told Dr. Stone and the rest of the people, I'm the type of person to have to learn by seeing, being there, and talking to the people. I don't know none of these people. A piece of paper is not good enough for me. So I'm passionate about this. I expressed this before in the past. That's, you know, that's not good enough for me. But I will stand alone. You guys' choice, I think is a good practice in regards of the county. I've been doing, going to a lot of training. They agreed to it. No, I cannot make her. I cannot make the county executive person. Let me rephrase that. However, I think it's just a good practice in regards of the quality of human beings and being more transparent. And one thing I will say, I don't like when people, I keep calling it politrich. You go out and we do all these promotional things and say what we're gonna do and be transparent with other folks, and then you get inside and then we switch. I'm a one-sided person, so I don't do that. I don't play games. So this is just from the heart, is up to whatever you guys want to decide on. But I think it'd really be good down in the future to have something on paper, so at least the paper would indicate and show that this is a good practice here, as opposed to just letting it say certain things and be dominated by the way that the language is expressed. Okay, Dr. Store.
Could we have a roll call vote?
Yes, yes, roll call. First roll call by Store, second by Fortardo. Second by Lorraine Cowherd. Okay? Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Portato.
Yes.
Goss.
No.
Harper.
No.
Ingram.
Yes.
McGuire.
No.
Patterson. Rector.
No.
Store. Summers.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thorstlen.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wolken.
No.
Young.
Definitely yes.
Clemmons.
No.
Clifford.
No.
Covert. Eisenman.
Yes.
Esri.
No.
Rosales.
Yes.
Passed.
Thank you, Jesus. Okay. Moving on to number two. I am also recommending resolution to be included, additional trial policy to the county board and procedure. Can I get a motion? Can I... Oh, Lorraine Cowherd first, Thorstlen second. Any discussion?
Charles.
Oh, okay, sorry, Goss, didn't see you.
Sorry, I didn't realize I had my microphone on. I'd like for your clarification on page 31. Article 13, subset A. Thirty-one. It's at the top of the page.
Okay.
So are you suggesting that county board members should be paid their one per diem for all meetings attended where we're appointed to committees outside of the county board?
So let me say this much, in terms of particularly picking all this stuff out, we would have to go back over it to exactly see how this stuff is interpreted and the meaning of each one. My point is, my argument was to have this additional information. All we've been taught is best to have more information than less, and I think we need it so that in the near future, we would not have any problems like Lorraine and I had when we went to Springfield. We had some issue there because the policy rule was not clear. So what I'm saying is, I might not know the answer for this, but I do know the answer in terms of how things may be interpreted. It's good to have more information than less information.
Well, the problem is, you're talking about getting rid of ambiguity, and that's what this is, is it's clearly ambiguous because it doesn't spell out exactly what you're paying for. Are we paying for, are you suggesting we pay per diems and mileage for outside committee appointments that are made by the board? If that's the case, I can't support it. If it's not the case, I can support adding this. Other than, you still haven't, you talk about up in article... When we ask for permission, you still don't have, that's in article, what would that be, 7B, Documentation of Expenses. It says that we, sorry, page 27. You have that we need the estimate, but you really don't have who we need to take for approval to travel. And I think that needs to be addressed as well.
Okay, so let me say this much, whoever revised this, you've been on the county board for a while, and this is exactly when Pius was in charge. This is the county board rules that they adopted and they approved, and they presented and voted on. So this information is already there. Now, in regards to how it was interpreted going forward, I don't know. But what I am saying, it is best to have this additional information there so that we can get clarity, because in the incident that happened once before, our county executive got the information from this old ordinance to clarify the situation that Mayor Lorraine was going through. You follow me?
Yeah, yeah, but I would, I would suggest that we get it right now before we just ram this through. That, let's make it, let's make it crystal clear so that when we add this, I have no issue with adding it to the board rules. But let's get it crystal clear so that it's, I can go to this part and say, okay, I want to travel to UCCI. I need to go get approval from Max, whoever that person is. I'm not even gonna suggest who it should be. I'm just saying we ought to get that cleared up, and we definitely ought to get Article 13 on page 31 cleared up. It's so ambiguous that we really have to start to manage that.
Right, well, in regards to the whole policy rule on my end, I think a lot of stuff need to be revised over. That's just my take on it.
So starting with this stuff on, in Article 7, the first thing, approval of expenses is by a roll call vote at an open meeting of the county board, is what it says, right? So then is it the question that you have just where the receipts would be submitted? I'm not sure where the, because it does seem like it has maybe an approval.
Yeah, it does talk about approval before the travel, and that's where, it's below that. I think these two should be, honestly, be flip-flopped too. A and B should be flip-flopped, where if you're asking for permission to travel, you should do that before you get back and have a roll call vote. But, I mean, I just think if we're gonna go to this extent, let's get it right the first time so we're not back monkeying around with this some point in the future.
So, so I have two friendly amendments on that. My first friendly amendment is that A and B be flipped, because it would be like you document the expenses. What, oh, I'm making two friendly amendments to this.
Okay, to his. I was gonna say, I didn't make an amendment.
I forget who moved this, but I have, I'm making two friendly amendments, that A and B be flipped, because it's, you document the expenses and then the county board approves them. And then my second one is, county board members shall be paid per, one per diem daily, maybe we could say for conferences or trainings, because that's what really this is about. This isn't, you're, the advisory boards and committees is already addressed in another section. This is specifically around the trainings, right? We, you know, if we were paying a per diem for every little committee that the board is on that meets here in Urbana, we couldn't do that. We don't have that much money. And also, there's some rules around the payment for those that already are in existence that vary from board to board. So would that be, would that make that more clarified? And maybe we could say conferences or training related to county board, I don't know. But I'm welcome for y'all to wordsmith it.
So I'm not just so stuck on the, I was affected by the conferences that we attended. But however, I'm just talking about in terms of, if everybody take part of these policy and rules, they'll pick something out that may be problematic or can be questioned. So only thing I did was, I didn't add nothing to this part of it, the travel policy. I just got the ordinance underneath Pius, because it was directed there when Lorraine and I was going through our situation. The county executive went back and got the information from this ordinance. I was not on the county board then. So I'm taking that, hey, maybe this was correct at the time when she did highlight one article of it to go forward to clarify me and Lorraine when we went through our situation. And the last, one last thing, since I got the floor. I do clearly remember I sent an email out to everybody. It was blind copy to the Republicans and the Democrats in regards to chiming in on this and helping me out with this, because one person cannot do it all by himself. I did not hear no response from nobody other than Ponjel and a few other. No Republicans at all.
Okay, so just for a point of clarification, I am proposing that we, I am formally proposing as a friendly amendment to the, whoever it was who moved the amendment, that we flip A and B under Article 7, and that we change, county board members shall be paid one per diem daily for board-related conferences or trainings. And that is my, my, A could be, that's my proposed amendment to this.
County Executive.
I think it's just a point of order. The thing on the agenda is whether you adopt this or not adopt this for your board rules, but this is an actual ordinance that was approved by the county board, and that's not on the agenda tonight, so you can't really change that.
That's what I thought. So we're gonna go forward. Oh, sorry, McGuire.
Sorry, I guess, going back to the changes, there really don't, I don't see a mechanism to figure out how to control the budget, either for the first part, before it comes to the board, and we don't have a way of following this budgeted item. You might have it for the first part if you go to UCCI, or one or two people do that. But when you start having every one of the board members able to go to a training a day with a per diem, and if the per diem is $45 to $60, and I'm not saying everybody's gonna do that every day, how do you, how do you control that? And does that come to the board every single month? And do we vote on that every single month? And how much time does that take? I mean, how do you, I mean, I'm not saying we can't do that. I'm just saying, how, how does that really work?
So what I'll say is, we will flush that out, just like we do with any other issue, when that time arrives. But as of right now, my suggestion is to add this information there, because it's good to have this, to have this conversation, to have this additional information, as opposed to having limited information in a rulebook that, and then you just start doing things. I'm very suspicious when you just start doing things when it's not in the rulebook. And then you have to go back to the past ordinance to justify why we do what we do. That's why I decided to include these additional 10 pages.
Okay, I'd like to say, just keep bringing up UICC. UICC reimburses the county for money that is spent for whoever attended the conference. Like, we have a graduation coming up from the conference, the leadership conference. They'll pay up to $75 for if we stay overnight there and get a board for $1,000. So UICC shouldn't be used as example.
Any more discussion? Stephanie?
So I totally misunderstood. So I see, this is, just to put this document as an appendix to that document. So this already exists, but I do agree that maybe we need to revisit this document. Like, we can't open it up today, but we could vote to make it, I mean, it makes sense to me to make it an append, like, hey, go look at the travel rules, but it does seem like maybe there's some need for clarification of those travel rules, so.
So, that's, I thought that's what we was doing, was to vote on adding on an appendix tonight. That was my understanding. No.
Well, that's...
Go ahead, Goss.
Sorry I derailed that, because that's not the way I understood it either, but we can't, I mean, I call the question, because all we're talking about here is to add it to the county board rules. That's all we can talk about in tonight's meeting.
So, roll call? So, roll call? Okay, can I get a motion? Oh, I got the most, I'm sorry, I forgot the lot going, okay. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Any nay? One aye? Motion pass. All right, where we at? We are at F of a business. I have no other business, does anybody else have any other business before the board? Okay, seeing none. So with G, the chair report, since there's a lot there, my vice chair, Rector decided to do audit reading there. I think I need me a drink, drink of water. Go ahead, Rector.
Thank you, Chair Young. Vacancies appointed by the county board chair for information only, expiring November thirty, twenty nineteen. Public aid appeals, which is three positions, two Democrats and one Republican. Vacancies appointed by county executive for information only. Zoning Board of Appeals, Urbana, Champaign, South Homer, Scott, Newcombe and Rantoul Townships are already represented, expiring November thirty, twenty nineteen. Champaign, Urbana Mass Transit District, a Democrat, expiring December thirty-one, twenty nineteen. Mental Health Board, three positions, two expiring December thirty-one, twenty nineteen, and one unexpired term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. The Community Action Board, four positions, two private representatives and two client representatives, expiring December thirty-first, twenty nineteen. Bailey Memorial Cemetery, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty-four. Clements Memorial Cemetery, two vacancies, terms ending twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-three. Locust Grove Cemetery, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty-one. Stern Cemetery, two vacancies, terms ending twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-four. Drainage Districts, the Willow Branch Drainage District, two vacancies, terms ending twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Harwood and Kerr, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty. The ones I'll mention listed here below, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty-two. Lower Big Slough. Nelson Moore Fairfield, Salt Fork, Summer Number One. Union Drainage District of Stanton and Ogden Township. West Branch, Number Two, Town of Scott. Pissotum Fire Protection, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty. Dewey Community Public Water District, one vacancy, term ending twenty twenty-one. Board of Review, one vacancy, term ending, term ending six thirty, twenty twenty-one, which would be a Democratic appointment. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
All righty, thank you there, Policy Vice Chair Rector, appreciate that. And last but not least, H, item on consent agenda, I believe is E one and E two. That's it. Neither one. So none of them?
They weren't unanimous.
All right, none. This conclude my information, I yield back to you Chair Rosales.
Thank you very much, Dr. Young, for your report. Next we'll have finance, Jim Goss, please.
Okay, item A one, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 forty-eight. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department zero twenty-six, County Treasurer. Increased appropriations eighty-one hundred and fifty-nine dollars, increased revenue zero. Reason, the treasurer's office needs a temporary employee to fill in for the chief de, chief deputy treasurer who is on leave. The amount of eighty-one hundred and fifty-eight dollars is needed to pay the temporary employee for seven weeks at the same rate of pay. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortado, Second Mr. Store, discussion. We do have the, the treasurer here tonight, so if you've got questions. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes. Item two, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 forty-six. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department zero four two, Coroner. Increased appropriations of thirteen thousand five hundred and five dollars, increased revenue of thirteen thousand five hundred and five dollars. The reason is to expend funds received through a private grant from Larry Children's Hospital of Chicago for sudden unintentional opioid and other drug-related deaths. The suitors contract, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Clifford, Second Mr. Rosales, we do have the coroner in the room, if you've got questions for him.
Sorry, just a procedural question, we don't need fifteen votes on budget?
No, that comes at the county board meeting.
Just at the full finance, okay.
That's at the full county board meeting, it's a simple majority to get out of committee. Any discussion or any questions for the coroner? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, number three, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 forty-seven. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department zero seventy-seven, Zoning and Enforcement. Increased appropriations of twelve thousand and eighty-seven dollars, increased revenue of twelve thousand and eighty-seven dollars. Reason is grant received for property cleanup, is there such a motion? Mr. Clemens, Second Mr. Esri, discussion, Mr. Esri.
Yes, I was just wondering, is this the grant that earlier in the year, Mr. Hall, during one of our ELUC meetings had mentioned that we'd gotten the grant, but basically the money was unaccounted for or not sure where it was at, we'd, we'd received it, but it wasn't showing correctly, I guess you could say, or anywhere in the accounting.
It was, I'm sorry, it was received, but not all of it was spent, so there's still some to spend for next year.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, it was received quite a bit earlier in the year.
Right.
I guess, this is the, is this, this is the one that Mr. Hall had indicated at ELUC that we had the money, but we quote-unquote had the money in the account, but yet, since it wasn't placed in the right account yet, it hadn't, it wasn't accessible, I guess you could say.
Right, this is, this is, this is to basically increase the appropriation for that, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Number four, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 fifty. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department one twenty-seven, Veterans Assistance Commission. Increased appropriations of eighteen thousand dollars, increased revenue of eighteen thousand dollars. Reason is to receive donations from disabled veterans, five thousand dollars. Bob Moff family, five thousand dollars. VFW Post six three zero, one thousand dollars. Hometown Heroes Micro Motorcycle Group, sixty-five hundred. County Executive Darlene Kleppel, five hundred. And appropriate for assistance to veterans and flags for courthouse veterans monument. Is there such a motion, Mr. Rector, is there a second? Mr. Harper, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, number five, budget amendment nineteen dash zero 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 forty-three. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department zero twenty-two, County Clerk. Increased appropriations of seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Increased revenue seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. The reason is for the IVRS grant fund reimbursement. Is there such a motion? Ms. Fortado, second. Ms. Taylor, sorry, couldn't see you. Discussion. The clerk is here, if you've got questions. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay. All right, number six, budget transfer nineteen dash zero 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 nine. Fund six twenty-eight, election assist and accessibility for Department zero two two, County Clerk. Total amount is seventy-one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. The reason, grant dispersment for election software, is there such a motion? Mr. Ingram, second, Ms. Coward? Is there, Coward? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. And finally, budget, or number seven, budget transfer nineteen dash zero 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 one zero. Fund zero eight zero, General Corporate to Department zero twenty-two, County Clerk. Total amount is eighty thousand dollars. Reason to use understaffed surplus funds for secure election-related expenses. Is there such a motion? Mr. Thorzland, second, Ms. Coward? Any discussion? Mr. Harper.
There we go, we're on the air. Since Aaron's here, what would be some of the related expenses for secure election stuff? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Man, how y'all doing, man? I ain't had nothing to do with all that, don't. So, the election-related expenses in this case is to buy the DS two hundreds, to spend that eighty thousand on DS two hundreds. Appreciate the question.
Other questions, while we've got the clerk here? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Thank you, Clerk Ammons. Okay, treasurer's report, monthly reports for August and September are up on the website. And I will place those on file. Same thing for the auditor's report from two thousand, September two thousand nineteen, also on the website. Replace, place those on file. State's Attorney, item D, renewal of State's Attorney appellate prosecutor program for February, or February fiscal year twenty twenty. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, second, Mr. Thorzland, discussion, there was a memo in the packet. If you've got questions, I don't see the State's Attorney here, but we can probably get through them if you've got questions. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, item E, E one, JAG Program Intergovernmental Agreement. There's an intergovernmental agreement, I need a motion to approve. Mr. Clemens, Second Mr. Store, discussion? We do have the sheriff here, if you've got questions? I think it's pretty straightforward, but he did a good job with his memo. Okay, seeing none, all those in, oh, sorry.
Yes, it was an excellent memo. To all elected officials, let that be like the memo standard, we love memos.
Those of us. We do, we do appreciate that very much. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Mr. McGuire, are you in, okay. It's all, one hundred percent unanimous. Okay, county executive F one, approval of issuance of RFP two zero one nine dash zero zero six. Enterprise Resource Planning System. Is there such a motion to approve the issuance of the RFP? So move, Mr. Rosales, Second Mr. Store, questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye? Opposed, nay? Motion passes. Okay, item two, recommendation to county board to approve an ordinance providing for the issuance of not to exceed nine hundred thousand dollars of genera, general obligation, limited tax refunding debt certificates, series two thousand nineteen, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding debt certificates to the county, evidencing the rights to payment under an installation purchase agreement and providing for the proposed sale of said certificates to the purchaser thereof. Is there such a motion? Mr. Esri, Second, Mr. Clemens, we do have, if you've got questions about this, Ms. Ogden can point out there is a threshold at which we would not do this.
Is that three?
Three percent? So if we can't have a three percent savings or more by our financial policies, we would not move forward with this, but there is belief that we would. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes. And finally, recommendation to the county board to receive and place on file the FY twenty twenty tentative budget in the back of our packet. Is there such a motion? Mr. Thorzland, is there a second? Second Ms. Taylor, discussion? Just puts it on file for the public. Seeing no, okay, your last.
Just, I just wanted to mention, there is one change from what was previously, correct? That was from the previous one and Tammy, could you maybe just speak to that really quickly? Just so, just so that the public understands that, since our last meeting to this meeting, there is one small change from what you've seen in the past. The State's Attorney's appellate prosecutor program that you just saw in the resolution is a six thousand dollar increase over what we're currently paying. So we did go ahead and include that six thousand dollar increase in the twenty twenty budget, thereby reducing the actual general corporate fund surplus by seven hundred, or, I'm sorry, by six thousand dollars. And now we are sitting at a seven hundred and twenty-six dollar surplus, not including the potential additional hospital property tax revenue.
Other questions? Mr. Harper?
I understand everything you've done, all the hard work. And I agree it's a balanced budget. I will be voting no, and you all know what my one concern was last month, so, yes, thank you.
Other, other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of placing the FY twenty twenty tentative budget on file signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay, motion passes. Other businesses or other business to come before the committee? Seeing none, I have no chair's report. Okay, items to be placed on the consent agenda. That would be A, two, three, four, five, six, seven. D, one, E, one, F, one, F, two. And that would be it.
Mr. Goss, could I respectfully ask that F two not be on consent agenda? I need to check with bond counsel to ensure that we follow proper procedures. I think it'd be safer if we just go ahead and not include that on consent agenda.
Absolutely, will not be on the consent agenda, so it will be on the county board agenda next, next week. That, that concludes my report. Back to you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Goss, for your finance report. I have no other business and I adjourned this meeting at seven forty. Thank you one and all for coming.
We do not adjourn, we recess the meeting.
Recess?
Okay, well, I just never want to do it.
We're not recessing, it's adjournment, correct? Adjourn.